Sounds by the professor
How long's this?
You play me
Can you play me?
You play me Yeah, yeah, yeah You play me
Oh, oh, yeah, yeah I've been trying for years to get you to hear me It's time your ears got amplified You put me up on putting me down Then you pick me up and spin me around Your pimpin' is one way to win again But you showed up not to be a player just the same
You play me
Yeah, yeah, yeah
You play me
Yeah
You play me Game back in life, you play me
Yeah, yeah, yeah
Game back in life, game
You play me all night long at your party Using me to get that thing started, yeah Tell you what, let the player pull your card 'Cause I ain't never been played so hard Pimpin' is one way to win again But you showed up not to be a player just the same, yeah
You play me
Yeah, yeah, yeah
You play me
Game back in life, you play me Yeah, yeah
Game back in life, you play me Game back in life
When I wake up, all I want is for him to take me away To that incredible comfort zone inside that beautiful place And I need to release tension so that I can feel brand new Reach that height that only one in this whole world can take me to, oh All the time I want you, baby All the time I need you, honey All the time I gotta have you, sugar Because I'm addicted, oh, yeah All the time I want you, baby All the time I need you, honey All the time I gotta have you, sugar It belongs to me I'm fanatically addicted to the way that he be loving me It's like a love of some bad habits since it's mine Got to have it Fanatically addicted to the way that he be loving me It's like a love of some bad habits since it's mine Got to have it It feels like, like I never had it right before this There was so much emotional pain, nothing positive to gain But I'm loveful and completely now Not just a physical thing, but it's something spiritual, oh All the time I want you, baby All the time I need you, honey All the time I gotta have you, sugar Because I'm addicted, yeah, yeah All the time I want you, baby All the time I need you, honey All the time I gotta have you, sugar It belongs to me I'm fanatically addicted to the way that he be loving me It's like a love of some bad habits since it's mine Got to have it Fanatically addicted to the way that he be loving me It's like a love of some bad habits since it's mine Got to have it I just got to have it, I'm a fanatic I just got to have it, I'm a fanatic I just got to have it, I'm a fanatic I just got to have it, I'm a fanatic All the time All the time I want you, baby
When I first saw you, baby, baby, baby I wanted to play Me those dream eyes of mine Started to cry My identity Pushing my backseat True become a reality Every time I see you, baby, baby, baby All I do is stop 'Cause you're the most precious thing, baby I tap my dreaming eyes as ever seen So I continue dreaming Me and those dreaming eyes of mine Chuh Oh Is it just Is it just that you're the finest looking thing that I ever saw? Or is my imagination running too far? Oh, yeah, yeah Or is it that my eyes are telling me something you can never see? Something like me be with you, will you be with me? So free, baby, you free to find my vision of love It seems you be the cherry on Peter Cherry in my chocolate covered dream So it seems my, oh my Me and those dreaming eyes of mine Oh All my guns, this comes Switching that ass I wanted to admit it in pain Treat her bad, but if I had the chance I'd treat her like a queen Touch like I could do in all my dreams Yeah If you only knew how many times Nothing could do Quite sure that you would find Sure that you would find, I'm going number one My, oh my Me and those dreaming eyes of mine Oh, my Yeah, yeah Is it just that you're the finest looking thing that I ever saw? Or is my imagination running too far? Sure that you know, sure can you know Or is it that my eyes are telling me something you can never see? Something like me be with you, will you be with me? Oh, man So free, baby, you free to find my vision of love It seems you be the cherry on Peter Cherry in my chocolate covered dream So it seems my, oh my Me and those dreaming eyes of mine Yeah The tone, the tone, the tone
How beautiful love can be On the streets, love is hard to see It's a place I got to be Loving you is loving me How beautiful love can be On the streets, love is hard to see Gotta reach that frequency Loving you is loving me Yeah, you know what love is Even found it on the ground where the thugs live My man had to dig deep to find his Couldn't sleep, he's on the real, he had five kids Live niggas, real niggas express and taste it In crack games, black dames and big faces cases in court Fam showing love and support You and your baby's mom thought that love was a sport As men, we were taught to hold it in That's why we don't know how till we older men If love is a place, I'ma go again At least now, now I know to go within At times, it can take your folk a spin Heartbreak hotel to your home again I seen love make a nigga so pretend Like a story that he don't want to end, yo How beautiful love can be On the streets, love is hard to see It's a place I got to be Loving you is loving me How beautiful love can be On the streets, love is hard to see Gotta reach that frequency Loving you is loving me It's all love where we come from In the hood, love, we was told to run from That same hood where the guns sung We holla love, hoping it become one Crack got so many lives undone From lack of love, many hide, some run I knew this girl with a son who dreamt of acting in plays Demonstration with a man had her trapped in a maze Trying to find herself again, much of that she a gave Love could free us, too, if some react as a slave Funny, we love them more when they relaxed in a grave Wonder if a thug is raw, is he acting afraid? Everybody loves someone, I attract shade Heard of the love of money, but compassionate pays Talk about it with my youth, so she understand What it is to be loved by a man, uh How beautiful love can be On the streets, love is hard to see Yeah, it's a place I got to be Loving you is loving me How beautiful love can be On the streets, love is hard to see Gotta reach that frequency Loving you is loving me
Sounds by the professor
How long's this?
Tonight, she will be by my side, side on the dot 'Cause even good ones turn bad And I ain't bout to get at no mind, my lady Tonight, she will be my alibi to keep the ugly softly But that ain't right Whatever players tonight useless for me to see or lay A.D. Unless she can be my A.N.G.L. This one looks nice to try I like the way she fits my eyes So beautiful that she's divine I spotted you from across the room And I was digging your moves You looked at me in a way to prove that my eyes Had did what I wanted them to do Come fill my love when I move on this dance floor with you I love your ways, you've got me for tonight, girl So don't be shy, angel I do believe our time's almost up for this night, babe Oh, you came with him, that means my time is growing slim 'Cause you know I've got to find My, 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 peace Tonight, she will be by my side, side on the dot 'Cause even good ones turn bad And I ain't bout to get at no mind, my lady Tonight, she will be my alibi to keep the ugly softly But that ain't right, that ain't right But I'm a player tonight useless for me to see or lay A.D. Unless she can be my A.N.G.L. 'Cause you know I've got to find someone That's fine, ask you to be mine Time to last a lifetime I hope I meet that lady to be I'm fed up with these no progress dances and these late night creams She will be the hottest one from this picture
If I could turn back, hand to time Make you fall in love, love with me again So would you give me the chance to love, to love you? Know you're the right way again God, tears is gone God, tears is gone
Yeah Check it out Tell me if you want something, you could just Come on, baby Tell me if you want something, you could just Come on Tell me if you want something, you could just Come on Tell me if you want something, you could just Come on Tell me if you just want to get closer You got the numbers on your poster And if you want, I'll make it show that My sexual intensity captivates You got it on your body, crack to waste juice Ecstasy is what I produce Sweetie, my virtues are never ever loser I'm not the Irish Jaszmo you're used to This jones in my bones could hurt ya Unless you ready for the future Tell me if you just want to get closer I wrote the numbers on your poster And if you want, I'll make it show that Never ever will you unisatisfy To another climax, climax Climax, and if you ask for climax A climax Come on, baby Tell me if you want something, you could just Come on, baby Tell me if you want something, you could just Come on, baby Say what you feel, feel what you say Don't hold back, it's real that way Take the time, and the time it takes, baby, it's just fine Shit, I can't time to waste Just speak off, speak off, it's not the time to play You know, I, I want you in a special way Special way, special way You know, we need to make it happen like yesterday You know, get it up and running like Flojo We can kick it like they do up in the dojo You know, if you ain't ready, this can go slow So if you with it, you can let me know, so Tell me if you want something, you could just Come on, baby See, you sexy girl, and also quite confident You can sell goods and properly market it Yo, what's up, seven, just kind of pocketed I wanna get your short prerogative I bet you meet a lot and gets monotonous Spitting more games than in the evangelist Girl, you know you scandalous Trying to get one on one with an argument
Fly love, say what? Fly love, say what? Fly love, say what? Fly love
I don't stress it, baby They say you got me dressing crazy Eating veggies, wearing search sex medium And if we break up, I'mma eat meat again I feel complete with you Shit, I held up signs in the street for you In the street, people ask about me and you I tell them we go through what most people do Let's let go of fear, love We can grow as long as my beard does You push me in the way you supposed to Queen, you're the one I come close to
Come close to me
Come close, baby, come close, my
Baby
Let me hold you, love, come closer, love
I know this world
It gets crazy, baby, it gets crazy, girl
What's it without you?
I know you used to watch me Ride Gucci and Versace But now I'm back to my skater roots But still got friends in the Gator Booze And what's up with them hater dudes? Ma, hating is okay to you? Why? 'Cause they driving them fancy cars? Look, well, I could ride you on my handlebars On my BMX, baby I'm creative with Tourette's, baby My testicles over ecstasy When I think about you, make it please
Come close to me
Come close, baby, come close, my
Baby
Let me hold you, love, come closer, love
I know this world
It gets crazy, baby, it gets crazy, girl
What's it without you? I hope you're thinking you run my mind You're right, you're right, you're right Running's the best, you're just my type Only I'm sad, tonight, tonight
I don't stress it, girl They say that you and I are from different worlds You from underneath the underground Where I understood my hip-hop, one, two disposition I don't stress it, sweetie You writing cursive, I writing graffiti Opposites, not really, we just customized to our terms Hey, I'm instructing you to listen I'm saying it, a rat's ass I couldn't give Even though you far away, in my heart, you live So bring your little sweet face closer to me And look into my eyes, tell me what you see
Come close to me
Come close, baby, come close, my
Baby
Let me hold you, love, come closer, love
I know this world
It gets crazy, baby, it gets crazy, girl
Did my dragon make me stop whining? I see my influence still shining Hit you with my ultra violet Skin cancer causing laser beam flow Then cause a riot Oh shit, I'm gonna give you more and more Flows that's gonna help you see who got the real raw You can watch me rap, who's on the entire nine pieces? Cold-blooded flow that got you motherfuckers freezing You must find your style, I can't defy with your own profile Niggas don't understand what we be talking about Design, especially for fighters who try to figure it out Ice campaigns all over beats, son While I smoke your fillies all the way down to the last one Yo, watch me skyrocket Cry me for my flow and get your hand out my pocket As the world keeps on turning Killing microphones, I see nigga most determined Keeping fighters feeding like this was their last serving Taking away from fake motherfuckers like Marv Furman Got your whole entire mental house on the prairie burning Take me for my round like you stuck me for my Sherlin Yo, you must be out your fucking mind The only thing you really need to do is chill and watch the sunshine Did my dragon make me stop whining? I see my influence still shining Hit with this hippo call Keep my people moving like a U-Haul Then I'm gonna hit you with that Get that short to make it don't crack Watch me knock you down You'll be surprised, I think the fucking word will get around A fighter came up missing and the bitch was never found, y'all I come with shit so short to hit Hit you till your motherfucking dome split Counterfeit, nigga, need to sit back up off of it And if you don't listen, you deserve whatever you get Just a moment, let me take a breather Got you niggas sweating cold like you caught the fever Just to know my every move, you fuck up freaks like a reader For those who bite my flows, I got to always pat my heater I'm about to burn that, made a nigga go We quick to turn the nigga off I quick to break a nigga spine And any effort made by those who try to take mine Did my dragon make me stop whining? I see my influence still shining
Every bar change Touch this illa fifth dynamite Touch this illa fifth dynamite Touch this illa fifth dynamite Every bar change Touch this illa fifth dynamite Touch this illa fifth dynamite Touch this illa fifth dynamite
Check it out, in, intro, true Do, do, sent the soul missing link What could MCs who listen think? It's black thought, open your eyes and don't blink To rock this mic is like a basic instinct, but In, in, true, true Do, do, sent
For a high knee, the mic champion More than a Steppion Motherfuckers sweating me, begging me just to get me on Macro cosmic, micro master
Ay, yo, I'm all the way, way Feel, feel, lay, lay People wanna see the way that Illadel play Look in the mirror, watch what yourself say I'm from S.P.A.E. No more, no man can test me Thought I keep it linear, upper echelonian Hanukkah, hold the rhyme and it flows Reminding them cats that hear me Some shit from back in the past, you half-stepping ass Could never fathom a grasp, of course
We got a doctorate in cold rocking it Bringing this apocalypse, nigga, you mad topical This my rap's tricks, you optical, Mr. Superficial I'm ripping apart your heart tissue This is your official dismissal I don't study the artificial Who fucking with the dark crystal, yo, what art issue? I'm moving like a smart missile Aimed and guaranteed to hit you When the fifth do get on a perform, you in for it It ain't no way to censor it My style metaphoric To bricks and ten-ton stacks hard to lift The artist coming out the fifth darkness We go back like ancients While you ancient, subterranean Living against the gradient Afro-American slash half-ladian In your universe, my star's the most radiant
Every bar change Touch this illa fifth dynamite Touch this illa fifth dynamite Touch this illa fifth dynamite Every bar change Touch this illa fifth dynamite Touch this illa fifth dynamite Touch this illa fifth dynamite
Feature red, break the day Bounce with it, nigga, bounce, uh, uh
Sounds by the professor
How long's this? Cause I need you Why that makes? I do not know How it scares me Eyes are me And I don't want to stay awake Makes no sense to me
Turn it up
Look at it this way Cause this is a strange way Cause it's amazing Cause I ain't crazy
Yo
Cause I
I want you, I need you 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 I want you, I need you, yeah I want you, I need you I want you, I need you
Am I too weak? Does it change? Should we take it slow? This is a mystery to me It's a mystifying Oh, what a surprise How great thou art If we look at it this way Cause this is a strange way Cause it's amazing Cause I ain't crazy Cause I need you
I want you, I need you I want you, I need you I want you, I need you
Cause I
I want you, I need you I want you, I need you Yeah
Philly I need more guns, more hot whips Find honey dips that be proud of this shit Gigi Hunter, my girl chill with the latest fashion I need more of that Where it feel like, mommy, yo, I'm spinning these chips What's the deal with the thonzo, I'm digging that shit I'm a ghetto, so I'ma hit the gas Yo, I blaze the crowd with five O on my Blazing hot, they know we got more For their X foot on the gas Laying low, it's a hundred-yard dash You know how many broads I done flown past? The zip bring me with you and consume good grass Lay in the bed, caress your fat And if a fool out of line, he fill a gun blast It's serious with you, it's serious with me I need you in my life so seriously We rock ice then make 'em sick in the hood And if a rare being, if they up to no good We live in square, we escape from the hood As long this one point is understood, girl
Came so uninvited, aiming for my heart At first, I tried to fight it Didn't want to fall in love Knew you were deserving But every time before Sweetness led to hurting So hiding was my cure What made your touch unlike the rest? My lips said no, my heart said yes There's nothing left to question I feel I've learned my lesson Never underestimate what a heart can exude When love calls on you Calls on you There's not much There's not much you can do Can hide, run away Cause my thing Is too late You have changed my vision Now I see so clear I have no choice but listen Your heart has gained my ear Please allow my passion to outweigh what I've said Girl, only everlasting describes what lies ahead Through time, you've shown a better day That day is now And now, I say These arms were made to hold you For you to always go to You'll never have to worry, girl Around you, they will stay When love Calls on you Calls on you There's not much There's not much you can do Can hide, run away Cause my thing Is too late When love Sticks on you Calls on you There's not much you can do
People still want you on the news When it's on, it's assumed it should be Recruit us, sort of body movement Later, for concentrating, the mood and the sister I'm ain't focused, just meditating, no way to work Verity, can I possibly rock up in the club? TV done got it hot, so even the thugs Sluts, cut the rug, show love While the DJ cook it up Girls slinking the dick, 'cause they blue humping on their butt It's one of the ones that old ain't young relate to Infectious groove, smacking Get your mind synchronized in time with my music And if it can't dance, wanna clap your hands